Forum, so let's get going. Trustee Andreson and I have had some conversations this evening and today. He will not be joining us as he is out of town. Having said that, let us start the regular board meeting dated Monday, July 6th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Catherine, could you take the role?
Trustee Lyman.
Here.
Trustee Fella.
Here.
Trustee Wood. Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Cooney.
Here.
President Miller.
Here. And again, we will waive the Pledge of Allegiance this evening and move to public comment on agenda items only. Did we have anybody out there that wanted to address the board on an agenda item at this time? Okay, saying none. We have two items on the consent agenda. Is there any trustee that would like to take anything off of there or add anything to that? Saying none, so can somebody make a, please make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with items A, motion to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated June 1st, 2020, and item B, motion to approve the regular village board meeting dated 15th, 2020.
Second.
Good, good. Catherine?
Trustee Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Fella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Cooney.
Okay, very good. Trustee Wood, I don't know if you have joined, if you had, you're on mute. We had no old business, takes us to new business. We have several items on here. If I can have a motion on item A, please.
I will move to approve an ordinance proposing an amendment to the boundaries of the downtown and Dundee Crossing Business Development District and the approval of an amend business district plan relook relation thereto and the scheduling of a public hearing in connection therewith.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Catherine?
This is just, what exactly?
I can explain that. Both of these items are ordinances which establish a public hearing date as part of the process to amend the downtown and Dundee Crossings BDD to add the two parcels, which would be the Caterpillar parcel and the remaining Floty parcel, and then the creation of the new TIF, the public hearing that's required for that. So they are two different processes, so they're two different public hearing dates, and all of these ordinance is do, is establish those dates. Attorney Smith, do you have anything to add on that?
No, that's correct.
Jennifer, can I ask you a quick question? Is the Speedway at Christina and 72 in this BDD or is it in the Dundee Crossings already?
It's, it's already in that BDD.
Yes, okay.
Okay, anything else? Catherine?
Trustee Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Fella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood. Trustee Mahoney.
Hold on just a second. Trustee Wood, you're on, you're speak, you're on mute. You have to go down to the bottom left of your screen and hit the, there you go.
Got it.
Trustee Mahoney. Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to item B. If I can have a motion on this, please.
Go for Kathleen.
Okay. Back up to the page. I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance calling for a public hearing and joint review board meeting to consider the designation of redevelopment project area and the approval of redevelopment plan and project, South Illinois Route 72 Tax Increment Financing District.
Very good. We have a second.
Second.
Good, thank you. Any discussion on this? Catherine?
Trustee Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Fella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
And Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
Okay, takes us to item C. If we could have a motion on this, please.
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of 2022 International HV 607 one truck with a dump body and accessory equipment from Rush Truck Centers in the amount of $153,549 even.
Very good.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this? Catherine?
Trustee Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Fella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
And Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
All right, very good.
I have one quick question for Phil. Hey, Phil, for this new truck, are we going to be able to fit it with the blade that we use with the other big dump that we have that we use for plowing? Or are we going to have to get a new blade?
This truck will come with a new plow altogether.
Oh, well, okay.
Yes. It'll come with a new plow, that's correct, yep. It's 11 foot, 11 foot snowplow.
Okay, good enough.
Okay, takes us item, item D. If I can have a motion on item D, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution declaring certain vehicles, equipment, and other village property to be surplus and authorizing sale of said vehicles, equipment, and other village property at auction.
Second.
Very good. Discussion?
One quick question. Phil, the, the dump that was being used at the, the corner of Went and Madison for that flood issue that we had that you guys took care of, the, that dump we're keeping, correct?
Let me confirm. Greg, are you on the phone? Greg, Greg Gatz, our Superintendent of Operations on the phone. I think it was truck 32, which I believe is one that we are looking to, to dispose of. I can confirm if Greg may have a better recollection as to which truck was there. I'm pretty sure it was 32, which.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't.
33, I don't recall.
Yeah. I know it was a, it wasn't that very, very large one that we had, but it was a fairly good size, but I don't.
It was one of, it was either 32 or 33, and 32 we're getting rid of, 33 we're keeping because that's a 20, that's a 2005 truck.
Okay.
According to this memo, it says it's vehicle 34 that we're.
We're unloading?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So 33 may have been onsite that particular day. 34 right now is, we're not using because it didn't pass a recent safety inspection, so that one's pretty much just waiting to be disposed of. So one of the trucks that was onsite was either 32 or 33.
Okay, just curious.
It has 25 years of service on that truck.
Yeah.
Greg just texted me and said, to answer your question, 33 was the one that was onsite. So it's the one that we're keeping, yeah.
Good enough. Cool.
Okay, where are we with this motion?
We have a second.
Motion and second.
No, we did vote on this, didn't we?
No.
We didn't have a vote yet.
Oh, vote again, just to be sure.
Okay.
All right. Catherine?
Trustee Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Fella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
And Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to our financial reports, the warrants list you have in your packet. However, we do have a new fiscal year-end report, and I believe that we have Brandis on the phone, if you'd like to say a few words about that, or Jennifer?
Go ahead, Brandis.
Just remember to unmute yourself, though.
Let me see if I can find her.
If not, we can, we'll come back to that.
We'll come back.
We'll go to reports next. I have no report. It's been very quiet this week, which is fortunate. Real briefly, I can touch on the numbers. King County is in really good shape right now. Most of Illinois is in good shape. There's a new graphical mapping software package that Harvard University just put out there, and it does a really good job of doing both nationwide and county to county in Illinois specifically. I don't really look at too many other places. And it, it gives you a breakdown of the positivity index and the number of new cases. One of the numbers I look at is the numbers per 100,000. King County, just to give you an example, is at 6.2, which is, you know, it's not the best, but it's way, 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 way down on the list. It's, it's a lot of the rural counties in southern Illinois that are the ones that are popping up the higher positivity rates right now. So when you see the numbers going up in Illinois, it's not so much the Chicago metro area right now, it's the really far downstate Cass County and some of the little guys that are, you know, hitting bad numbers. So the other thing that I've been running is the spikes in the average cases by age, and in King County right now, the, anything that is moving the needle upwards is specifically in the 19 to 30 age range. Those are the people that are actually causing the minor increases that we're seeing in Illinois. Hopefully that stops. It's going to take another two weeks or three before we see the results of anything that happened over the Fourth of July weekend. Hopefully everybody stayed home, stayed safe, and, and a lot of people went out of town. And let's just hope that that doesn't drive the numbers up. But right now, I think Illinois today, the numbers were pretty outstanding. In the last couple of days, the numbers were 10, 8, and 6 deaths, which is remarkable. I do expect that, you know, we, we did see a direct correlation between Memorial Day weekend and reopening and some numbers going up, so I would not be surprised to see them go up even further after the Fourth of July weekend. But hopefully people are going to use common sense and, you know, realize that this thing's not over yet, and they gotta still stay safe. That's really all I've got right now. So we'll go around the table and see what you all have. Kathleen?
Um, I was out walking the dogs the other day and saw the new, Phil's new van, the transit van.
Yes, the water van, yeah.
How's it working out?
Fantastic, fantastic. We can now safely and securely transport a lot of our water system equipment, meters and, and underground detection equipment and so on and so forth. And so it's pretty, we're working out of a pickup truck, and so a lot of the equipment was exposed to the elements and whatnot. So this, we've got some shelving units inside the van, and so it's, it's going to be a tremendous improvement over the truck that, the pickup truck that we were previously using.
Great, great. And then the other thing with, with the, any rain event and the water overflowing at just south of Bonny Dundee, Edward, is it Edward? No, Ashland. Is there any other development on what's going to be happening with that?
It's my understanding that the, the property owner's attorney has reached out to Greg Smith and, and had some, some, some communication. I don't know, Greg, if you have any, if you wanted to add a couple thoughts, but they've asked for some assistance in trying to come up with a permanent solution there. And Greg, I don't know if you have any thoughts on, I think you communicated more directly with them.
Sure. The attorney for the property owner there did reach out to me after I made contact a couple months ago about the flooding on the road, the village's roadway there. The attorney said that they are willing to cooperate with the village, but they're looking to the village to propose a solution. So I've been working with Phil and Jennifer to talk about next steps in this matter. As the repeated flooding of the village's roadway is causing some problems, I understand.
Yeah, it's not just the village's roadway. There's a lot of, the water's undercutting the road right now, and also the neighbor's property across the street, directly across the street. And they're definitely affected by, by the fact that this isn't under control. So, thank you.
Just, just out of curiosity, just throw this out there as a jump ball, anybody that's got the answer. Whose jurisdiction was, would be responsible for channeling water from either a spring or runoff into an existing creek?
It could be the Army Corps of Engineer. They may be involved in, in that discussion.
Okay, that'll be fun. All right. Anything else, Kathleen?
That's all I have.
Trustee Fella.
No report.
Very good. Trustee Cooney.
No report.
Good. Trustee Lyman?
I just want to take my hat off to Phil Cotter and his guys. They did a really, really good job of the flooding mitigation at Went and Madison, right there at the south end of North Gate Park. We always, every year, of course, would have to take the big pumps, and we had to back up through the storm sewer system there, and we'd end up with a lake on the corner there. It was nasty, and so they trenched it and tapped into that retention area that's in behind there, in the North Gate area there, and successful test, it worked really good. After that, we had a really big rain, and everything worked out okay. So job well done for Public Works. Only other question that I have then, Phil, is do you think for that issue that we have right next to Ruppnecks on Howard, where they're flooding as well, I was wondering if the same sort of approach could be taken. It would be a little bit more surgery in that this, the, the storm sewer that's right in front of Smith's that floods their front yard and Ruppnecks right next door taps into a, what looks to be like a standpipe, if you will, that floods up and backs up. If we were to do the same sort of thing and tap into that swale in the back, we'd just have to go around the yards on both sides of Smith's house. There are three very large trees, so I can't imagine we'd be able to trench on either one, but I was wondering if we thought about doing the same approach. The only thing of it is, is that we'd of course have to go under their driveway, which is surgery I'm speaking of. But we still do have an issue there because with that last big rain we had, oh man, their, their front yard filled up really, really quick. It was just a lake. So, but I know we're, we're addressing it, so just to give it a thought, and just if you could let me know what you guys plan to do so I can let them know.
Will do, absolutely, yes.
Joe, did you have any input on that? Is that something that you've looked at?
Yeah, I don't know if you're aware, but there's a bunch of micro cells that are depressional areas in the terrace there. I know there's a problem at Kimberly, a problem at Howard. It's all fed by dry wells, and it just takes a lot of time for water to infiltrate to get rid of the water. And over time, the, the dry wells get less and less effective. So you either have to install new dry wells or there's a way to pipe it to, you know, an open basin like we did down, down off of Went Madison to do that.
So, Joe, do you, are you saying that we could just put in a new dry well that would accommodate that? Because I think where it's located is right between two driveways, the distance of which is not very much, you know, it's not very great. So I'm just, I'm just curious if, if putting in a larger one, or would it just be a new one and then trench deeper?
Right. You'd have to study the area to make sure.
Okay.
Swale it or pipe it to an open area, because that would be the best possible solution. But you know, if, if there's not enough room between drives, you can also pipe it to another part of the parkway and install a new dry well.
Well, and that's kind of what I was thinking. The only problem, of course, is that we most likely have to go completely around the perimeter through the last two houses off of Howard there, Ruppnecks and the neighbor there. It's simply because from where that, that dry well is, there's no way to go straight back. It would be very convenient if we could. Only there's three very large trees that go between those two homes, and I doubt very seriously, given the distance between the houses, that we'd be able to trench that, certainly without removing the trees. I don't know, so.
Trustee Lyman, we've, we've taken, we, last week, we, we attempted to identify what's causing those sinkholes to occur, and, and one thing that we looked at, either the sinkholes, the soil is being sucked downwards, or if it's being blown upwards. So we're, we may ultimately have to do a little excavation adjacent to that, between those two driveways and close to that tree to get a better understanding of what's happening there. There's sanitary sewers in the area, there's storm sewers, there's dry wells, so there's a, a number of things happening down there, and, and perhaps we're thinking that there may be some, some connection to the sanitary sewer that may be causing part of the problem.
Yeah, that would complicate it, that's for sure. But yeah, if we could, if we could just keep on top of this, I know you got a, you know, a list a mile long, but this has been a situation, a few years, more than a few years now, in the making that they've been, you know, dealing with it. They've got the, the horses, the Public Works horses in between, and everything is roped off and taped, and it's, like I say, it's been like that for at least three years now. So if we could, you know, just stay in touch on this one, it'd be great.
Will do.
Appreciate it.
All right. Trustee Wood?
No report.
Thank you. Do we have Brandon back yet? I'm sorry, Brandis, looking at the wrong thing.
He should be.
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine. Do you want to talk about the wonderful fiscal year-end report?
Sure. So as you can see, our revenues came in very close to, or a little over what was originally projected for fiscal year 20. And that's primarily because we have not seen a lot of impact toward the end of last fiscal year from COVID-19. So we were pretty good with that. And our expenditures came in almost 10% less than what we had budgeted for, for our general fund. And again, the revenues are for our general fund as well. So another thing that you may see is that we did not, for other revenues, you'll see that we're over about almost $300,000, and that's primarily because the refuse, garbage revenues were not included in last year's budget. So that's accounted for in the general fund this year, and I believe in the past it may have been in the water sewer fund some sort of way. We pretty much kept staffing the same. We did not hire any additional staffs other than filling vacant positions. I would say that any expenditures that occurred in the general fund were pretty much status quo, primarily personnel, any contractual services that we may have, and just our everyday expenses. So nothing really out of the ordinary. And we also were able to fund our police pension contribution at the ladder back in a recommended amount, which was, Jennifer, I can't remember off the top of my head, but maybe almost $200,000 over the DOI recommended amount for fiscal year 20. As we move to other funds, you'll see that revenues came in pretty much close to what was estimated for the fiscal year, which is pretty good. And expenditures were pretty steady. The, one thing that I would like to point out is that we were able to purchase a police vehicle, and we did start renovations for Village Hall. Those were pretty much the major projects that occurred within our unrestricted non-general fund account. And as we move to our restricted funds, which include our water sewer and Dundee Gateway Fund, you'll notice that those revenues came in pretty decent, and that the expenditures were also low here. So I, I guess the summary is that we pretty much kept our expenditures low, which helped us maintain and stay under budget, and also our revenues came in pretty close to what was projected for the year. We did not see, again, as I stated, any impact so far on our revenues for the end of last year. We will be sending out a May report for our end of, end of May report, and there I did notice in some of our revenues in our general fund specifically, some decline in revenues compared to previous years in the same month. And I hope to share with you all, as we go through the fiscal year, a three-year analysis of certain revenues that are, such as like our sales tax, income tax, water sewer revenue, so that you guys can see the changes, if any, as we go through the fiscal year. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me?
I got a, a couple. One concerning the Village Hall renovations. Were any, was anything going to be happening to the outside of the building? Did we budget anything for that, or is that?
For this fiscal year?
Yeah.
I believe we did budget windows this year.
Okay. All right. And then the only other question I had was the external audit. Did we know when that might be completed? When, when was that going to be? They would have the results from that?
The audit is typically wrapped up at the end of September, October. So we should have, yeah, we're in the midst of it now, and they haven't even really started a lot of their field work, so.
Yeah. I figured since, you know, June 1st, they would probably be, you know, a month or two in, but, okay, three.
Yep.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Who's administrator?
Yeah, if I could just, Brandis, I just wanted to mention also, thank you for that wonderful report, and one thing I wanted to make sure you understood is that the, some of the state shared taxes are traditionally delayed. In, in other words, like a revenue received in January, that would be a sales tax collected by the consumer in January, would be booked for April in, on this report. And that's why you're not seeing the COVID-19 impact. It's not because there wasn't an impact, it's just it's going to appear in a later month. So I wanted to make sure that the board understood that. And I also wanted to point out just one little highlight, keeping in mind, we did not do a national tool project, which was over 250,000. We did not do that project yet, but you can see on the, the first page that our cash balance went from, so cash on hand went from 6.7 million to 8.1 million. So that just tells you the gap between the revenues and expenditures, and that's a real win for the village. So I want to make sure I pointed that out. Other things that I have for you, we do have a planning and zoning commission meeting scheduled for this Thursday. It's a special meeting. I just wanted to touch base on that. There's two items on the agenda, I, I believe. One is very simple. It's a historic commission review of a sign that just came in for one east Maine. The other is an issue for 509 Max Welton that was tabled at the last planning and zoning commission. And I just want to make sure that you understand this, because this issue has become contentious, and I wanted you to understand that the village has taken all the steps necessary to review this zoning request. It is a variance for an accessory structure, but other interpretations with regards to village code and what is needed to issue the permit are being questioned. We've had the village engineer, Joe Hines, review this item, as well as the village attorney, myself, and the building official. So we have four sets of eyes independently review this item, and we feel confident in our determination that a variance is requested and is the only action that is requested prior to the issuance of a permit for an accessory structure at, at this property. We will be preparing a formal legal opinion. Attorney Smith is in the process of doing that. Attorney Smith is in the process of doing that. And the planning and zoning commission, as well as the village board, will have all the information that they need in order to move this matter forward. But I wanted to let you know that, that is something that, that is coming up. And if you had any questions about that. The other items I have is, we will, are planning on, at this time, to have a July 13th village board meeting. Primarily, one of the reasons is for the Maxwellton item. As it comes out of the P and Z, we'd like to have that on the July 13th village board agenda to just provide the best, most expedient service for the petitioner as they've experienced some delay and are looking for an answer on their variance. We also will have the meeting, are planning on having it for the, to select our new IT services, the infrastructure and the services. So if you're not available on July 13th, please let me know. We can always push the meeting back a week if necessary.
I will be out of town next Monday, but that doesn't mean I won't be able to make the meeting. It just means I can't confirm at this time. I will have my laptop with me, so it's possible I'll be able to do it. I'll know more a couple days ahead of that, I suppose.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I, I would be concerned. Oh, go ahead.
Jennifer, I'm, just so everyone knows, I'm on vacation July 13 through August 4th.
Okay.
I would be a little concerned that any decisions that are going to be made with regard to Maxwellton issue on the Thursday meeting at the P and Z is not going to give the board a lot of time to either review or to consider any changes that need to be made. There are a lot of questions on this, Jennifer, and I really think we should make sure that our ducks are in a row on this, specifically with regard to the taxing bills on this and the consolidation of the lots. And then with regard to the interpretation of structure that is allowed on that property. I don't think we're going to be able to settle this one in a week, certainly. I would really be surprised if we could get this one done by the end of the summer. So I would really, I would, I would caution us to do it that quickly. So if, you know, if, if this is really the only item that would, we would be discussing at the 13th, certainly the other item could be, the historic item for One East Main could be pushed back to the following week and we'd stay on our regular schedule. You know, we, we, I think we've got more, more to discuss than the time will allow in order to be able to settle this on Monday.
Yeah. Keep, keep in mind, the only item regarding 509 Maxwellton that will come before the fireworks will be a variance.
I, I understand that. I understand that.
Also, on July 13th, there is the annual JRB meeting for the eight existing Tiff districts at 3:30. So you do have the agenda packet for that. Feel free to call in if you'd like to. What else do I have? Maybe Phil may be wanting to mention that there, we do have a pending public works labor position is going to become vacant. One of our newest hires is moving to Florida, so we're going to be losing J.R. Hernandez, David Hernandez. And so we are going to need to recruit for that position. We do have two vacancies now, so it's becoming difficult and we want to make sure we have proper staffing prior to the snowplow season. Also, I just wanted to make sure everyone saw that we did have a reopening plan to bring staff back to the village hall and we have started that last week, although we had air conditioning that was out of service. So not everybody, it didn't work as well as we had hoped and that's okay. We are full-staffed Public Works and they're working out of different facilities with staggered start times and end times. So we're making Public Works work in that capacity and we're also full-staffed in the police department. Other than that, that's all I have. That's a long list. I hope, George, you talk about the ILEPA accreditation, but I'll leave that to you.
On my list.
Good. I figured it was. I figured it was.
We're not at full staff in the police department. You know that.
No, all of our shifts are filled, aren't they not?
Oh, the shifts are, yeah.
Correct.
Deputy chief position is open.
Oh, yes, of course. Yes. And that is the subject that we'll be talking to you about. We'll come back to you to talk about that as well. Correct. The deputy chief is vacant and George lives, breathes and feels that every day. Good point.
Okay.
Can I ask if the deputy chief position was something we were going to be looking to refill? Because that, if I recall, when we created that position, it was basically in name only, essentially. It was, it was a, you know, sollic.
Let's, let's hold off on that conversation.
All right. Then can I ask, the other question that I had would be, given the sales tax restrictions that we are finding ourselves in due to this shutdown, the state is likely to be bringing in a reduced amount of money due to sales tax. And I'm wondering if you, Jennifer, or anyone else who might know, think or have heard that we may find a challenge to get our portion of the sales tax from the state?
I have not heard anything regarding that.
Okay.
I have that either.
I mean, there have been often times where in the past, I know we've had to basically fight for what is legally ours, the, a restriction on this due to this COVID thing is just going to enhance that sort of effort. And I'm wondering if that's going to be the case.
That was a discussion, yeah, what you're referring to, I think, is income tax and...
Sales.
Okay. Because that is the tax that the state has gone after in the last seven, eight years. So that has been a little bit of a discussion about whether that would be further rolled back. And it depends on who you talk to, quite honestly, and where that's going to fall. But I think since they did not provide any direct funding for revenue loss, they've decided not to touch that at this time, but that's the latest that I've heard. Sales tax, I have not heard anything being withheld, but that doesn't mean that that's not happening, that discussion's not happening.
I mean, frankly, I've heard a little bit of some odd discussion with the state, one being the possibility of them looking at a state-imposed property tax to make up for this. I don't know if that's just wild speculation, if it's a scare tactic, if it's made to put off some of the municipalities or what, from monies that they've, you know, legitimately have coming or what. But it didn't look good. It didn't read well.
Well, that's, at this point, that's all conjecture and I'd have to know the sources.
Essentially, but since you got, you know, people who've got their finger on that pulse, I'm wondering if anybody's heard anything, so.
All right, let's move on. Village attorney?
No report. Thank you.
Village engineer?
No report.
Chief?
I first thought you'd like to know the police perspective on the 4th of July fireworks in town. I'm told that we had our fair share of it, but not as much as surrounding towns. And I'll tell you that on Friday night, July 3rd, we had two or three calls of fireworks. And on the 4th, we had eight calls. I received no complaints from any residents about lack of enforcement. I did receive one complimentary email. A resident was so happy with the way three of our officers shut down one fireworks get-together, that she wanted to bring in gift cards for those three officers for coffee. Very, very nice sentiment. And I want, I wanted to ask you, how was it by your houses?
As somebody that lives right in the heart of downtown, I could tell you, it was fairly quiet. It was all small stuff, firecrackers. You hear some, some larger stuff going off, but that was on the town directly north of us. So I'd have to say our experience was quiet.
Pretty noisy in the terrace.
I think, George, that I might be neighbors with one of those people that you shut down. We did see about two squad cars out in front of our house. So we did have a pretty extensive fireworks show for my neighbors and soon after, we did see the police here. So that might have been our neighbors.
That might have, that might have been the neighbors then that were asked to drown their fireworks in front of the officers and they did.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You may also remember that last week, there was an article in the Daily Herald about our quest for accreditation through the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. A week from today, we will have two assessors from elsewhere in the state conducting our onsite, it's called. And their job is to interview people and make inquiries. And they've already reviewed our written directives and now they'll be onsite to ensure that we do what we say we do. And you know, this is a very important priority of mine. It caused us, it required that we update a lot of written directives and policies and procedures. And you might know that our, one of our part-time officers, John Lawson, that has been his responsibility and I think he's done a terrific job. So the purpose of bringing in outsiders to examine what we're doing and how we do it is because getting different perspectives is always valuable. You know, we think we're pretty smart sometimes. Sometimes the outsiders are smarter than us and that's what we want. We welcome their input. I believe they will interview at least a couple of you, maybe more, I don't know. But I'm grateful that Jennifer and Lail have agreed to be interviewed. Lastly, the recruitment for the deputy chief has been authorized, hasn't been conducted yet. But Brad and I are working on the, the announcements that will go out to professional organizations. And what, what we, what we did, Jeff, was we changed his, we gave him a, a new rank and a new title and a new pay structure. That's correct. That governor used to be a lieutenant, was my observation, that he was doing the job of an exempt-ranked deputy chief, not of a civil service lieutenant. And so we changed the rank. When we hire someone, they're going to continue doing the work of an exempt-ranked deputy chief. And that's what I would like to hire.
Okay. Public Works? No report. Very good. Building official, do we have anybody from building here? Finance director, did you have anything else, Brandis? Nope.
No, I don't, sorry.
No problem. Thank you. All right. Last item on our agenda for this evening is public comment. If we have anybody that would like to address this board on any subject. Okay. Well, seeing none, we do not have an executive session this evening, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
No.
Very good. Catherine?
Trusty Linum?
Yes.
Trusty Sellup?
Yes.
Trusty Wood?
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Cooney?
Yes.
And President Miller?
Yes. All right, folks. Have yourself a wonderful evening and we will see you next week.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.